I will now call the special meeting of the history board of education to order on this October 30th at 5:30 PM. And roll call, please. Beeden. Becker.
Here.
Fortress.
President.
Fox.
Here.
LeFrohman.
Here.
Rete. Henson.
Here.
Approve of the agenda, motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, there are no discussion. Roll call. Fortress.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
LeFrohman.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Public comments, seeing no one, I'm not going to read the public comment statement and we will move on to our new business with the audit. Amber.
Hello, my name is Amber Cover. I was the auditor and the auditor partner in the audit this year. If you can roll through the next slide, please.
He's gonna give you the clarity.
Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. We'll do this. All right, perfect. I figured it out. Okay, first of all, this is just an independent auditor's report. We issued a modified opinion on our statement. We audited period ended June 30th, 2025 for the school district. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statement that they are not materially misstated, and that's what we did. We are required to communicate various items to you as part of the audit conclusion, so that's what we're gonna go through today, right here. And we've also issued that in a separate letter to the district as well, or to the board. The required communications, we go through the accounting policies. So management is responsible for the selection of the accounting policies. The significant accounting policies are summarized in note one to the financial statements. They did not change year over year. There was one new effective, new accounting policy that was adopted this year that related to compensated absences, and there was no material impact to the financial statements as a whole. Significant accounting estimates that our financial statements have relate to our net pension and OPAP liabilities and our depreciation and amortization expense. As part of our audit procedures, we evaluated the reasonableness of those estimates and found no issues with them at all. We did have a few proposed entries. We only had two that related to some state aid and some reverse, reversing the pay accrual that we had to true things up on the book. So, nothing major there. And they're proposed, meaning they weren't material enough to actually post them to the financial statement. We are not aware of any other, we are not aware of the audited financial statements being included in any other documents. We did not have any disagreements with management through the course of our audit. We did not have to consult with any other independent auditors during our audit. And then we are not aware of any other annual reports or equivalent reports which will be prepared by the district that would be in relation to the audit. We didn't have any issues, you know, with management prior to the audit. We had no difficulties encountered dealing with management. They've been great. Thank you to Crystal and Monica for getting us through the audit and getting it completed. Everyone was great and we were able to get it done on time this year, so that was great. We'll now go through some of the just highlights, really gonna focus in on the general fund. So you can see here, this compares last year to this year. So we'll go over some high level significant fluctuations that we had. So cash was up this year, about $6 million from the prior year. Really just kinda relates to timing and our payments and whatnot. We did have to pay the $3.1 million loan after year end, so that's also why we had some extra cash sitting in there. Our accounts receivable was pretty comparable year over year, and again, due to timing. Our general fund liabilities, deferred inflows and fund balance, we have a schedule here comparing prior year to the current year. The accounts payable is up this year, and within that is that $3.1 million payable, so that's most of that increase that you're seeing there. Due to other governmental units, this is broken out differently this year in history. It was just broken out as a, it was netted. This year, we broke it out for a little bit different presentation. Accrued payroll, pretty comparable year over year. And then we have our unearned revenue, which is comparable year over year. A big chunk of that unearned revenue is still that $1.6 million related to the bus grant that we have, that's sitting out there still. Our deferred inflows of resources are made up of our unavailable revenues related to grants. So this is basically revenue that we received outside of the 60 days, so on our funds level, it's considered unavailable revenues, so it's recorded like that.
Question, what was that about the bus grant?
Just, there's a, there's a unearned revenue in that $2.5 million. There's just a bus grant that we have in there that's included in there, so that makes up a big number. So while, you know, there was some fluctuations within the account both years, we had that $1.6 million sitting there. Fund balance, so our unrestricted fund balance is up from the prior year. You know, we had $9 million, or $900,000 in total. Fund balance is sure is $1.2 million, so we did increase that, which is good. Our general fund revenues, you can kinda see just a comparison of where the revenues came from between local, state, federal, and our inter-district sources year over year. Again, pretty comparable overall both of the years, but this just kinda shows you that breakdown between the different pieces year over year. Our general fund expenditures, these also just kinda shows it based off of the different buckets for instruction, support services, athletics, community service, debt service, payments to the subguarantee, and the capital outlay. So you can see year over year, they're pretty comparable. Our capital outlay is down this year because we had, we just had a lot more in the prior year. Cost cutting took place this year. As part of the required communications, we are to look at the effectiveness of our internal controls in regards to the financial statements and the internal controls surrounding that. So part of that, we look at, there's different categories of a finding. We have our material weakness and we have our significant deficiencies. A material weakness is really just a combination of deficiencies in internal control, where a significant deficiency is maybe just one and it's less severe. This year, we did have a material weakness, which is related to the books and records for this fiscal year, including bank reconciliations were not reconciled timely, just resulting in some material adjustments throughout the course of the audit. But again, we made, we made the audit, we made the deadline, so again, good work to the team. Does anyone have any questions on anything that we kinda went through, or any questions you have on the statements that you had in front of you?
Anybody have questions? Nobody?
I, I don't. Now, are you going over more?
This was it, yeah, this was just the general high level update. If you have some questions, I can go through it.
I have some questions. I was reading over the, not this, obviously, because that's here. Fabulous that we added to our fund balance, because that was a huge concern of mine. I wanted to know, or I wish I knew what page it was on. Because, is this the right page?
What is it in regards to?
Yep, I think it's the right page. So, we overspent by a million dollars.
What do you, what page are you?
Are you looking at the budget to actual comparison from the general fund, maybe?
Maybe.
Okay, do you want me to pop over there? Can I come over there and take a look?
You can.
Okay.
I don't even know if I'm looking at the right page, but, so. And I don't think I am looking at the right page, because on the other page, there was something else on the bottom. Oh, this is it, transfers in and transfer out. Can you please explain to me what that is?
So that's just really transfers from one fund to another of sources. So you're just kinda moving sources from one fund.
So if we have a huge amount in community funds that we didn't use there, we put it in our general fund, is that?
I don't know the specifics, so just give me the amount, can you speak a little?
I'm just saying that's what it means, so. We can keep so much, we have to keep so much in special ed, but we have an overabundance, so we can transfer it to the general fund to make, so that's where the, because we overspent by a million, so that's where we made up the million and a half to give us the $300,000.
Indirect cost from food service and the special ed fund, rent from the special ed fund, and then the transfer of the excess funds from special ed, the other 7%.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly. I don't think that one's okay.
Anything else? So, just so I'm clear, we're only adding $247,000 to our fund balance, correct?
I believe that sounds right. Are you looking at the general fund?
Yeah, $247,000.
So your change in your fund balance, that's, at the time, you can see it on the combined statement activities. You'll see all the different funds, and that change in fund balance is the addition or subtraction to your fund balance at the end of the year. So that's really the net activity of all of your, you know, the net of your revenues coming in and your expenses coming out.
Anybody else?
So, do you look at our final budget versus actual and say, you know, listen, where's this money coming from? They're showing on their end of the budget, which should be fairly close to the actual, and say, okay, why is there $1.5 million off?
Generally speaking, you know, we will do general inquiries if it is a significant number based on our materiality levels, but I mean, I think if you're looking, are you looking at the general fund? Yeah, compared to the comparison, you know, I think, I think our revenues were down. I'm going from memory here. I can open the statement. But, you know, our general revenues, I think, were down. Our expenses were down, I believe, as well. And I, you know, I don't know the specifics. We'd have to go line by line. I don't remember them all off the top of my head, but we do do just general inquiry analytics on that. It's not, we're not really auditing whether or not you were over or under those particular items. We're doing our audit procedures in other areas through testing of our, your net position and various testing of our expenses that we do throughout the file. That kinda makes sense.
Yeah, but in my eyes, your final budget should be really super close to your actual numbers.
I would, you know, I mean, that's, again, that's, you guys are the ones that are amending and setting the budget. I think that is a recommendation and a goal, right? You're striving to accurately budget for the year. I think our budget looks a lot better than it did last year, the findings and where we ended up. But I think that is a goal and something that can be approved upon, you know, through the next year.
I'd like to speak to that too, but we need to remember, and the community needs to remember, that our business department did not receive Jason Zernis's sheets and funds to go on where things were making up until the May timeline. So, making some adjustments is gonna be much easier next year when they have everything, but they didn't, they were not able to access files, historical files, to help facilitate what went into that originally or from that. So unfortunately, I think circumstances of last year left our newly formed business office to struggle and try to get it ready. I really believe that we're gonna have a whole different situation this year.
Well, I sure hope so, but my, again, my concern is then, what was the delay in giving them that information?
You guys had a computer with the attorney, and that all of his files are on a HP computer, and none of them was available to the business office.
So you're telling me he had nothing saved to the cloud?
They don't save to the cloud, they save it to their computer, so no. There were no files from Jason. They were with the attorney all the way until I returned.
That's concerning. That should be looked into.
Was that in this report too, that that was a deficiency, that we should be looking at our technologies?
There wasn't deficiencies.
I'm not sure how we could look into it. The Board of Education did an investigation, and the attorney firm took the computer.
What I'm saying is, they should be, those kind of should be shared on a locked drive.
That was a recommendation of the audit team last year, and actually, my first week with the district, I asked Brad about, how is there not like a network drive that Crystal and I can share files? They have it set up and on my computer, but only on my computer, so it still doesn't help for file sharing. So we've been pushing to get that, and that will make things considerably better.
For sure.
Because right now, we're emailing back and forth different versions of files, and it's just a recipe for disaster. So, we are trying to get to a shared drive for that.
In addition, it also has to do with the processes as we're finding, you know, the procedures and how we obtain this report and get this information, whether it's to the auditors or internal, because a lot of that stuff wasn't documented either. So that also unfortunately pulls a little bit on how you would get the information. It's for both, you know, once you have seasoned people, they usually just work through it and know what, you know, exactly what they need to do and whatnot, versus somebody that comes in, you know, fairly fresh and still getting accommodated to the system and whatnot. Pulls that up too, so we are in the midst of, as we're going through, like, hey, if you go to A, B, C, D, you get C.
I also believe that part of the work with Terry last was to run some reports out of the system and familiarize with some things that maybe we hadn't been using before. She helped guide some of that direction.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna call on you, because I knew you weren't finished, and then I have a question.
As a part of the audit communication letter, I'm looking at attachment A, that talks about the school district should implement various IT environmental controls, which is including data is not transferred and stored offsite, there are formal disaster recovery plan that identifies critical processes, so.
Yes, so we do a high level IT assessment. We have an IT department that actually comes in and they look at those types of things. Those are the same recurring recommendations that we had last year from our initial assessment that we did. So yes, those recommendations were there. I, so the recommendation regarding, or finding regarding the issue of Jason's computer and that stuff, that was not from the auditor.
Right, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking going forward.
Yes, absolutely. For sure.
And I just wanna confirm, those aren't material weaknesses or findings, those are just recommendations.
I understand, I understand, that's not.
And you have to remember, me working in the IT department, the mail is backed up with Google, self-efficient. So we don't have any need to back that up. The finance system that we're using to make our checks is backed up with open schools. They actually have a backup vault that they have, and it's also on another machine in another city somewhere. Then also, the student information system, that is, I'm most certainly backed up, not only in their premise, but offsite somewhere. The only thing, oh, and then all of the testing programs and all the stuff that Dr. Dillmitch is, you know, involved with, I'm sure those are backed up with the companies with separate vaults and separate things. So, we set this up as a district, so we wouldn't have to spend all that extra money on backing up all that equipment, because you're talking, you know, thousands of millions of dollars to set that up. But the only thing that I'm concerned about, and that I think that the technology department needs to work on, is for these two wonderful ladies here, they need to have some kind of cloud backup for their computers and their system. That's what they're talking about. So that, to me, is like the priority, should happen in the next month. They get some kind of cloud system, so that you can back up and be secure and safe. That's, that's the only thing I'm thinking. I don't know if that helps my input. That's all.
Isn't there something there too, about backup? Is that what, the risk is?
Yes.
So I was gonna say, '23, '24, the auditors recommended that, well, materials couldn't get to them in time. Now, '24, '25, materials couldn't get to them in time. And so, it's still the same person that's not here anymore, that his computer wasn't timely, that we couldn't get stuff. So I think we need, obviously, you got enough material to be able to do what you did, but there's still more findings possibly out there with the computer not being available.
I don't think there's more, from our perspective, yes, as a general recommendation, I think that they should be backed up. When we're talking about the issues and the findings that we had last year, you know, that related to not getting schedules, getting multiple trial balances, multiple journal entries, not getting into the schedules. You know, we pushed the fieldwork back probably five times, right? So we didn't issue this report until the end of January. This year, yes, the state of Michigan recommends that our bank statements or bank reconciliations are prepared timely, which is, I think, I think it's 30 days after year end. In addition to that, you know, we, there were schedules that we didn't receive on the first day of fieldwork, right? But it was a totally different magnitude of the audit process this year, right? We were able to get it done, but we were, you know, we were up to the wire. We were working really hard to get journal entries in and make sure we were good, and we finished up all of our schedules and stuff. So, it still, it didn't happen, and it's still considered a material weakness, because we didn't show up day one with everything ticked and tied and perfect, and here's all your schedules, right? That's, that's what we need, you know, we can't have a bunch of journal entries after the fact. But I will say that Monica and Crystal, you know, they've worked really hard to get where we are today. And the fact that we issued the financial statement on time, I think, really does truly speak to the effort, because I believe she, I don't remember the exact timing, but I, you know, we came in in the springtime, you know, we were, she was ready for us for our audit planning. I think we did that in July, it was. That request list was filled. We were out here. We had our planning done, and there's just a lot of learning. And whether or not they had the files, that's a whole other, you know, learning hurdle, but there's new processes they were trying to get in place. There's, you know, whenever you have turnover in a new system, it takes time. So, that, I believe, is the attributing factor to that material finding again. Next year, you know, we'll have to just, we'll have to see, and if things are, you know, in a better order and we get things more timely and we start fieldwork, then it's a different story. So that's how that would eventually go away.
Say, it's a material weakness, it's not a finding. And then I think number two, we're grateful that the Board of Education at the last meeting approved an accounts payable person, or not accounts payable, but a position, so that, that was the recommendation of Terry again, that we add another person to help make sure that those accounts are reconciled in a timely manner. So fortunately, that position will be hired hopefully in the next month, and that should make a difference as we're moving forward.
Okay, everybody good?
There's one, actually, one additional thing I'd like to point out. The financial statements today do not include the single audit, and that is because the final compliance supplement has not been issued. So as soon as that is issued, we have 30 days to issue the single audit to the financial statements. So I want you to aware that we did do most of, the majority of the work. I wanna say we're like 80% there. So, my goal is to, over the next week, week or two, we wrap everything up with that, and then as soon as that compliance supplement comes out, we're just gonna make sure that there's no changes or significant items with the new ver, the final version, and then we'll be able to issue that. So we do have, once it's finally issued, we have 30 days, so there'll be no issue with meeting that as well. But I want you to aware that it's not included in the packet you have today.
Just to make it clear, this does not mean that submit.
Yes. Yes.
So we'll get a copy, go ahead, get a copy of that when it's completed?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
It'll also be on our transparency page for the community as well, as well, these things will be uploaded into the board packet after this meeting.
Okay, all good?
All right, thanks, Amber.
Perfect, thank you, Amber.
Oh, we do need to approve the audit?
I know.
Okay.
Oh, we need the motion to approve the audit, but I'm just thinking you and. I need a motion to approve the audit.
I make a motion to approve the audit.
Support.
Motion by Nadine, support by Nate, to approve the audit and any other discussion.
All right, roll call, please. Fortress.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
LeFrohman.
Yes.
Henson. Yes, motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have.
Can I ask if we can make another motion to, ask the board to direct the district to do the cybersecurity risk assessment and to set up cloud-based backup?
You're making a motion to do that?
I'm asking you if I'm allowed, if I can, yes. Since it was on the agenda.
I have no idea.
Okay, well, I will.
Do Mr. Patterson, could she make the motion to do the IT backup and cybersecurity?
It should be noticed up ahead of time.
Because we approved this agenda already?
Okay, can that be on the next agenda on November 17th? But I do believe we can make a motion at any meeting, correct?
Generally, you.
And that is, this is part of the audit review, so why wouldn't I be able to make that?
We should provide public donors certain opportunity. We should provide public donors certain opportunity if it was an emergency situation.
Well, they are, the public was notified that we're reviewing the audit, this is a finding on the audit.
It's not a finding, it's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
I would love to be able to bring that to you, to the committee, the whole, so that when you're asking for an audit, that we get cost for that and bring that forward to the group so that we're not just.
It's not an audit, it's a risk assessment.
Uh, the risk assessment is an audit.
But yes, you can get.
Yeah, and I'd like to bring that to you and then I believe that something was purchased, I just want to make sure before we ask for something else to be purchased and we'll bring that information to you at the committee, the whole, and then for what you'd like to move forward. So we'll discuss it there and then what you would like to move forward to the, because I believe there's various ways we can do a cyber assessment and as far as we do some of those and I'd like to get different organizations in those costs to you.
Thank you. Also with the cloud-based storage.
Yeah, we have, I believe, I'd like to get the recommendation on whether we need cloud or local storage here, I believe it's set up to be local, not cloud.
Just on the agenda to discuss it, committee, the whole is fine, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, my turn. All right. Let's work that, okay. So just a couple notes about budget before we get into the details. It's important to remember that this budget represents our spending projections based on what is known as of right now. Certainly things will occur during the year that we wouldn't have foreseen or know of, but this is all based on what we know of right now. While the, but the state funding has been decided, specific impacts of some of, some of their funding changes are still unknown to the district. They passed a lot of funding laws and don't really know how to deliver it or we don't know the exact impact to us yet. So we've only put in known changes in this amendment. There's still a lot of uncertainty with the federal budget since federal government's on shutdown. We don't expect that to have significant changes on our budget, but it is still an unknown. Also, the budget amendment does not represent our actual fall student counts, they're still working on getting that number, so hopefully then we'll see a pickup with that in our next amendment, but that's not been updated. So some summary items based on revenues, the foundation allowance increased from $6,908 per pupil to $10,050.
Can I, can I get you just to correct that verbally again? I just think there was a flip of the nine and the six, 9,608. You said 6,000.
Oh!
Yeah. I was like, okay.
That was a big jump.
You guys have not received that PowerPoint, it'll be, it was just completed.
Okay, so with the correct numbers, we received $442 increase per pupil. Using our blended state aid enrollment, that was on our October state aid note, with the per pupil increase, that amounts to $1.28 million increase. And then this just talks a little bit about the FTEs that we use, which came again from the state aid report. Some state categoricals that were eliminated were totaled about $1 million and that was two of the MIPSers lines. There were MIPSers adjustments on other categorical lines, but some of them have an offset or we don't know exactly what the adjustment will be, so we've just adjusted for these at this time. Categorical increases, we didn't expect to see increases on state aid. There was a 25% increase in the 31A at-risk funding. We increased our budget by the 25%. I don't know that everybody's going to get an across-the-board 25% increase, but we made that assumption. The federal funding, we've left in the title, grants, an idea, we think that those will continue. And then ESAR, we had a lot of ESAR money over the last couple of years, that was concluded last year, so there's no additional ESAR funds in the budget.
Real quick, sorry, last year is in '24 or '25?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question while we're still on the revenue? What was the pupil count that was used? You said you didn't change it, so.
Uh, yeah, it's 2,905.75. So they, that came from the state aid report, so I don't know if that's, it's probably not really the fall count, but I don't know exactly what time period that.
That's, that's 10% of the last winter and last fall, right, or the winter before.
It's 10% of February, yeah.
February 2024. And so that's last year's count is what was used. That's what the state aid will do until the audit is complete and then they'll make an adjustment, financial adjustment for us. But we will also share this presentation that has that FTE for you.
This is just a chart showing the change in foundation allowance. So the last two years, it was 9,608 and so we see that, that increase for this year. This is our enrollment trends and I don't have anything in for '26 because we don't have those numbers yet. So we'll get you that updated once we have those numbers. Okay, so now into the fund. Revenue, we really looked at everything, we looked at taxes, grants, local or state funding. We had a little bit of carryover grant funding and I believe Amber spoke a little bit about that. One of our pleasant surprises, the state increased the foundation allowance from MVCA to match our foundation allowance. So they also had budgeted to have 400 more pupils this year, but we get 3% of their state aid funding. So when they, they got their increase in foundation, that was a, a little bump for us as well.
And that's reflective in this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Overall, there's not as much of a change as I was hoping to see in our revenues, but we took out $1 million from MIPSers, categoricals, but we had a few things that carried over from '24, '25 that we've included. So our budget increased the revenue by 532,000. So the pieces that carried over, it's, it's revenue that we should have received or recorded in last fiscal year, but we did not receive it in time to be allowed to count that. So instead of it being in the ending fund balance for '25, it's just going to be part of our activity for '26. The, one of the pieces for that was our community center grant. We had its, we paid bills over the summer and they, the auditors said we had to charge those back to last fiscal year, but we could not get the revenue that matched with that within the 60-day period. So in this year, we'll have that revenue, but we have no expenses associated with it. Same, there is a small amount of old reimbursement we were able to get from the DFC grant, but that will show in this year. And then the center program, we had to leave the 7% fund balance and this is a little bit more than 7%, but we'll be able to transfer all of that into general fund this year. So while we were hoping we would have ended with a 1.9 million fund balance, we really ended up with 1.2, but some of these pieces were factored in when we thought it would be 1.9. So really counting our fund balance and then these three items that carried over, that puts us at about 2.5 million. This is just a chart showing our, our fund balance year over year. You can see we went up some from '24.
I am, sorry, keep it up to you. So the, the two, so is that on the bottom of this, page three in this report you gave us, versus excess deficit, 1,300, is that what you were just explaining?
Um, yes, we'll get back to where we see that number again.
Monica, can you send this to us? Can you email this to us?
Yeah, I said earlier, we will get that to you and then also post it for the community.
The, but this presentation here?
Yes, we did not, it was just finished, so we did not get that for you, but traditionally we put it up in, right after, but we will send it to you in the morning.
We had major system issues with uploading the budget, so it, it really delayed us in putting this together, but we'll get, we'll make sure everybody gets that.
Okay, with the expenses, so we reviewed all the employee positions in the district and took actual incurred costs to date and added in projected remaining costs, which included the fringes. Added new hires were taken into consideration, including the new accounting position. Review, we also review current contracts, liability, for liability insurance, workers comp, cop years and other known contract changes, which some of that was, was already talked about in previous meetings and then in the proposed budget, which I believe as So as you can see, in the original proposed budget of '25, '26, we estimated a negative 2 million deficit. Again, as we explained in previous meetings, that that was just essentially a rollover budget. With all the estimated changes that we had now, estimated expenses, we are looking at expenses at 2.2, or I'm sorry, estimated fund balance at 2.2, which is about 3.84%. Again, this is not reflective of all revenues that we could potentially get this year and of course, you know, through the regular budget updates in the amendment, we'll get more information as it, as it comes. As Monica had already stated, that, you know, it's important to remember that the budget, the budget represents, you know, spending projections and based off of what's known right now. And again, as I've said and Monica has said, while state funding has been decided, specific impacts of some funding changes are still unknown to the district and to others. Federal funding is still up in the air bringing uncertainty and vitality to the budget. So as we continue, we'll be more diligent than ever in what we are spending, whether it's, you know, costs and supplies and as you've designated, cuts that we've already made that was, you know, we try to do furthest from children. And as we continue to look over that, class sizes and whatnot and see what else we can cut, that's within reason, you know, we'll continue to make those recommendations or expedite. Again, we'll monitor grant expenditures, ensure dollars committed are expended and reimbursed timely, so within the actual fiscal year and not the following fiscal year, so it can be recognized in the current correct year. And then any consideration should be given before making large unbudgeted purchases as negotiations with all union groups this beginning. And that's also, we also, and I'm sorry, I didn't say this beforehand, we also did take into consideration the percentage rate in our expenses for the secretaries and the GSRP associate, or teachers, and we just projected it as 3% increase. So of course those changes will be made once we actually go through the full negotiations and come to an agreement with the contract.
Have any questions?
Questions? I do. I'm looking over this and the transfers in have increased by $1 million, where is that coming from?
A majority of that will be the 722, I think it was, of the money coming from the special ed fund.
Was that on one of those slides that you showed?
It was.
It was really hard to see those slides.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was, here, I'll go back. Wait, yeah. It's right there, I can't zoom in, but 722,859.
Okay, and the 400, is that 400,000?
Yeah, 460.
From the community school grant that we've already expensed, but we didn't recognize the revenue.
We have recognized the revenue, but it's recognized in '25, '26.
Right.
Right.
Which is this budget we're talking about.
Correct.
You're talking about the community center grant?
Yes.
Yes.
So if you take that, about the 720, is it 22 and the 400, that's your difference, right? So high compared to what the original buzzer, budget was. W? Of course. I'm sorry, yeah. What is the decrease in other? What is, what does that consist of? Because that's almost $1 million too. What are we, what are we cutting there that makes up that $1 million?
I know one piece was a $300 transfer to the debt funds, that we don't have that budgeted this year.
300?
300,000, roughly.
So that's my question.
So I, I, I don't remember offhand what the other difference was, so we could look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, when you email, if you had time tomorrow morning, we can email those. That'd be great. Thank you.
My question is that we're not going to have any debt service, did we borrow more money?
No, that's our, for our bond payments and I think we were just short on collections the one year, so they, that was budgeted to have a transfer.
Okay. Thank you.
So where is the interest on the money that we're borrowing?
That is something that we're working with my lap in order to transfer the funds in and out. And as we start making those transfers, we'll be able to give you interest on the.
I think they're about, they're talking about.
The interest expense.
The interest expense for the state aid.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Did they call on the other?
That was already accounted for.
I know, but I think she said which line, would that be in?
I think, no, I believe it is other. I will get back to you on that.
You built it in, yeah, my question.
It is built in, correct, yes.
And then I, the fund balance, we submitted a budget to the state that had a zero fund balance and this is a negative 333.
We submitted it to the, the budget, that took a negative 300.
And then the amendment shows, so right now we have 1,240,000?
Yes, that was from the audit, what our ending fund balance was for '25.
Okay, and you're expecting 2,270,000 by the end of '26?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We also talked about the other funds that we will, when we do our two-month check, which we agreed to, we will give you an update on what those are as well.
So currently, we have 1,240,000 in the fund balance. Currently?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear because.
As of June 30th.
As of June 30th.
So we have more than that in our fund balance right now.
Well, this is what's written and what's presented and this is what goes on the transparency page, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else?
So we still have to, because we're still under the 5%, we still have to do something, don't we?
Yes, so MDE recommended we wait until the audit was completed to do, and then do a budget amendment, so we would have some actual ending numbers from '24, '25. Once we file the FID, they will see, and they'll get notice of our budget amendment. So they'll see that and then they will reach out. We should probably be back in the, just at-risk monitoring.
With Treasury.
With Treasury.
And we had talked with both Treasury and the state regarding that, which is why, I believe I sent you long emails in my, to kind of explain that that's why, no, we wouldn't do that until this is done and they were good with it. We now have 30 days to respond.
I have a question. So just so I'm clear, you're going to submit the audit to the FID, FID, whatever, today or tomorrow or whatever, what's the timeline?
It's due by the 3rd. So technically it's November 1st, but since it falls on Saturday, it's by the 3rd, so. And that's already something that's been working on, just a few other corrections as far as.
So that's what we voted on tonight, right? That you're going to send that?
Yeah, we couldn't submit it without the audit being approved, correct.
And then also, on top of that, you're going to submit the amended budget to them also. So those two pieces are important to send to them by November 3rd.
If you. If you approve amended budget.
If, yeah, if we do. Thank you. I just, in my head, I wanted to make sure I was clear.
So is this going to MDE and they submit it to Treasury? Or is it going to both? Or is it going to Treasury and they submit it to MDE?
Yes, we're going to be doing all of the above. We have to reach out to Treasury once we do that, but also the internal systems will work, and then also MDE. So it all kind of works within itself. We will reach out, in my opinion, I will reach out to both of them to kind of let them know what happened here. And then as it works through the system, they'll send us letters. And you guys will get a copy of those letters too. I'll make sure you get them when it comes in.
I just have one more question. So the sheets that we received, the 1.8 increase money, did that affect the actual from 2024, or did that affect the amended budget? We got a 1.2 sheet and a 1.8 sheet.
I'm sorry.
Of cuts that, I'm trying to.
Yes, cuts that.
Of the cuts that we're making.
We got. Is that for the '24, '25 school year, or is it for the '25, '26?
So.
'25, '26.
Yeah, the Board of Education did not do any cuts before June 30th last year. People held strong, didn't fill positions, but they were not, in January, they didn't sit down and say, okay, here's what's happening, we need to make cuts to change the budget direction. All of those cuts were as we presented you the first budget for the '25, '26 school We have additional pieces that we can do, we just need to have a larger conversation. There's some positions that, you know, as things happen, we may not fill, but there's also some classrooms that you've asked for me to bring you, the class sizes, which we'll talk about on the tent, that are, these cuts have not gone without impact to individuals throughout the district.
Can I ask my question now?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was.
That's okay. So the 34 million for the basic, or the total instruction from the original budget down to the 32 million is a decrease of about 1.9 million. Were those the items that we saw on those sheets? I guess is my question. So even though we, and those are, to me, that's, those two items are the items that directly impact students, correct?
Not good.
It would have been in the, can you say what lines you're looking at again? Because, you know, the changes happened.
The first two lines.
Basic programs and added needs?
Yes.
So.
Basic programs dropped by 2, by 2 million. So I guess, what is the basic programs and why did that drop so much?
Well, some of it dropped because we didn't fill classrooms. We had several classrooms budgeted, many classrooms budgeted, such as we didn't have enough for three kindergarteners at United Oaks. We didn't have enough for three classrooms, I think it was, at United Oaks for first grade. We were looking at fourth grade. So we budgeted tightly, and you've asked me to share that with you. So that's some of that, items that are in there as well.
We can look at that closer and get some specific things that changed in there beyond what we knew of.
I would just remind everyone, this is a work in progress, and we believe and have believed that sometimes salaries were duplicated throughout, and so this is continue as they're spending their time developing departmentalized budgets. That will clear that out even more, but that takes time to go into that process.
Thanks, Monica.
All right, I'll set. No more questions? Motion to approve the amended budget number one.
All right. I move the Board of Education to approve the '25, '26 budget amendment number one as presented.
Second.
Motion by Debbie, second by Heidi, to approve the budget amendment number one for '25, '26. Roke, please.
The front row?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Brings us to the public comment section. Is there anyone wishing to speak for the second public comment? Limited to three minutes.
Please.
Yeah, so I'm just going to continue with my conversation. It's neat to see the audits come back. I think one of the things I was most interested in learning is how can we keep spending 500, you know, what is it, 500K in interest on the 12-month loans that we keep borrowing to, you know, the rescue loans from? I think that takes away from instruction, and it's really sad because, you know, we should be not in this situation. I don't know how anything could be, I'm so closely involved. Since 11/7/2019, I've received communication from the Hazel Park School District's attorney work product from Clark Hill, and it says such that Jason Zernus testified that all of his books were up to date, and there is no any unethical, you know, budget that wasn't correct. So I don't know, was it my alerting you guys to monitor the budget through a formal request? And then you went off to blaming everything on Jason when Clark Hill and Jason testified that they were in good standing with Plant Moran in this correspondence letter? So that's a discrepancy, and it's incongruent. How do you just, like, not know I'm going to follow up on it? I mean, of course. So the sum and total of it was I, you know, requested an internal fraud, you know, investigation. And I saw it as two-pronged. Ethics, you know, honesty, all the timeliness of getting books in order, audits, it turned in on time. Suddenly, Plant Moran says we're out of compliance, and we are not able to be able to receive their services. So what happened in between? And I still have a concern, which I'll likely put in writing, about breaches to the collective bargaining agreement with this inappropriate relationship between HR and the superintendent. I hear congratulations are in order, or could be an engagement with their children, which I understand is just recently hired by HR to possibly be here working in our district. And that seems, I'd like you to please investigate that for an ethics breach, because I think Dr. Krupi is profiting from her organizational fraud.
Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, word number in administration comments.
I'll go first.
Okay.
I want to thank you, the whole business office, for working so hard. And you can, obviously, since our budget and audit is on time, it shows all the efforts you put in. So I really appreciate all that you have done and all the extras that you provide for my million questions. So thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo that. I really appreciate the work that you guys are putting in. I know it's a lot, and hopefully we can get that person hired quickly to help alleviate some of this stuff, because, you know, clearly that is necessary. Also, football team, playoffs, excited about that, the play is going on right now, I believe. We're coming up soon, on Saturday. So good to see everyone moving forward and having a good school year.
Anyone else?
Just like to add, thank you, ladies, for all your hard work, dedication to get this done on time. I know you're here a lot, and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Sorry.
I just want to say, in Trevor's way, I took a class on grant writing, and it gave me a whole little appreciation for those of you who write grants for us, because it was a lot. We didn't get past, like, the first page, and she's, the lady was saying how some of our 500 pages, sorry. Just want to say I really appreciate that, too. Because it was a lot.
And I'd like to, yeah, go ahead.
And the band. The band is going to be at Ford Field Saturday.
I do want to, if I may respond, I want to be clear to the public, since it was allowed to mention my daughter, that my daughter is 18 years old. She's a senior in high school. She has no intention of marrying anyone, nor is she dating anyone. That's misinformation that's on the internet, and we should not be allowed to make comments about my children. It has nothing to do with my job performance.
Mr. Cox?
Nothing.
Are you good?
I'm good.
I'm good, too. Next meeting is the 10th at 5:30. And thank you, ladies, I didn't mean to overlook you. You are awesome. That's awesome. Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn. Support.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.